For public hearing of the planning commission to order. Purpose of this meeting is for hearing requests for changes in the zoning and special procedures. We call for a roll, please.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Ms. Hancock.
Here.
Ms. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Fagan.
Here.
Mr. Chair of the quorum.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I am Keith Taylor, Chairman of the Commission, in addition to the other members of the Planning Commission. I would like to introduce to my right Jacob Trimble, Director of Planning and the Planner's Design for tonight's petitions. I hope you've picked up a copy of the Public Hearing Guidelines brochure and tonight's public hearing notice, which were on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda list in order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition. You are who you are. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit two of chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to the Planning Commission's agenda. By doing this, you will be able to access a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the county council. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Norman of the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda package. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commissioner's recommendations will then be forwarded to the county council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted fifteen minutes. The persons in favor of their requests will speak. After that, persons in opposition are with concerns. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or second inning presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, I will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the county council. Their purpose to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. The first petition we're going to hear tonight will be PC thirty-three dash twenty-four TriStar Real Estate Acquisitions LLC.
Good evening, Commissioners. PC thirty-three dash twenty-four TriStar Real Estate Acquisition LLC is a request for a limited development in the mixed-use district for a purpose of multiple family residences and also three permitted uses on a tract size of twenty point three-five located in the east side of Timber Run Drive, north side of Olive Boulevard. From the county context map, the subject site is in mid-county, and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This larger area that shows the location of the site among other developments and surrounding developments. The subject site has been the subject of several petitions in the past. It is currently developed with a school, telecommunications, and some part of the site is vacant. So the north and east are residential developments constituting single-family and multiple-family residences. So the west and south are commercial developments. This is to the north showing public hearing notice. This is northwest at intersection of Olive Boulevard and Timber Run Drive. This is southeast along Olive Boulevard. This is northeast along Timber Run Drive. This is northeast showing transformers on the site. This is to the east from Timber Run Drive. This is to the northeast showing an existing building on site. This is southwest towards Olive Boulevard. This is northeast showing existing building on site. This is also northeast showing existing telecommunications on site. This is west towards Timber Run Drive, northeast along Cram Road. This is to the north showing subject site. This is to the north showing an existing single-family residence on site. And this is to the north showing the school on site. And this is also to the north showing the school for children on site, closer view. And this is to the northeast showing water body on site. This is to the east showing an area of the site itself. And this is also to the east showing the extreme end of the site. Next.
Mister, come up, please. Thank you.
So you just point the clicker to the door and.
To the right.
Good evening. I'm Josh Barkus with Stock and Associates here on behalf of TriStar Real Estate Acquisitions LLC. As mentioned, this was brought to you guys about a year and three months ago-ish that came with ordinance twenty-eight eight seventy-three. That allowed two commercial lots with no more than two structures at twenty thousand square feet with one standalone residence with a drive restaurant with a drive-through and one low-volume pickup window. And at that time had a singular building with two hundred and fifteen multifamily residential units, about sixty-five thousand square feet of building with eight residential garages for a maximum forty-eight vehicles with a five-acre park. This is showing the existing site with north generally to the right on the page where the Good Shepherd School is, as well as the existing building that is vacant right now, along Olive Boulevard. Generally showing the grades to the site, the existing building on the south side is generally the high point, draining back towards Olive Boulevard and then draining north through the site to a series of existing basins and swales on the north side. And this is the revised plan. So with this revision, the two commercial outlots remain the same and their right-in, right-out access off of Olive Boulevard. We have the same access off to Timber Run that has a right-out, a left-out, and an inbound lane. And with this, on the area where we had the multifamily residential singular building, there's seventy-seven multifamily attached residential units. This includes a clubhouse with a pool and then forty-three surface parking spaces. Along the west and the east side continue to have the tiered retaining walls draining to a retention basin to the northeast corner of the property. And then the park again is shown on the far north end beyond the Good Shepherd School. This is just some sections through the site showing the relief and the retaining walls that exist or proposed. This is the landscape plan showing the amount of trees and the shrubbery through the site. Proposed seventy-one canopy trees, sixty-three under-story trees, fifty-seven evergreens, and three hundred and eighty-one shrubs. And that includes through the site and then generally around the park area as well. And here are just some views of the architectural elevations of the building. So most of the buildings are four units attached together. There are a couple instances where there's five buildings attached together and one instance, I think, where there's only two. And it's generally hardy board siding, some stone, and architectural shingles along the roof. So this would be the garage side, and then the opposite side would be the front entry. Those are all pointed towards each other except along Timber Run where the front of the houses are pointed that direction. Some of the side views. And just another scheme with the color of the type of siding along the buildings. And one elevation of the clubhouse on all four sides. So it has an outdoor area that's covered by roof with some fencing around it for an outdoor seating area. And that's it unless there's any questions.
Questions from the listeners? Todd or Rovetta, do you have any questions?
I do. Can someone just give me an update on what was happening a year ago since I'm the newest member on the Planning Commission?
So a year ago, where the seventy-seven units are shown, let me get back to a plan. There was a large four-story apartment building that was shown. I'm not sure how to do the red button or if it shows. But there is an existing cell tower on the site, and there have been discussions over the past year about that cell tower and how it does or doesn't affect the site plan. As of right now, there hasn't been an opportunity to actually remove that or place that on top of a building, which was the original intent with the large apartment building that was being proposed. So that coupled with just the market of what's available right now or what's wanted gone to this plan that has these multifamily buildings versus one singular apartment building. But the remainder of the development up front along Olive and the park in the back have remained unchanged.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? While it's not necessarily directly a land use question, can you describe a little bit for the Commission about how this development would be managed? Would it be managed like a typical multifamily development with like one manager on site? Something like that? Or would these not be condos?
Matt Siegel with TriStar Real Estate Acquisitions LLC. So yeah, these are townhouses. They're all, they'll all be for rent, just like a regular multifamily apartment. Professionally managed by an asset manager. We don't do that in-house. We outsource it. In this situation, it'll be managed by a very reputable company that you're familiar with that does a lot of work in Clayton and Chesterfield and other areas around town. This, so yeah, everything will be mowed at the same time. All the landscaping will be changed out universally from Jacob, from like Olive Street Road, where we have our, we'll have some extensive landscaping and monument signage. I would expect annuals to be planted annually and we'll carry that all throughout the courtyard area. The one unique thing about this, which we've done in other designs and other projects with the courtyard kind of concept allows all those units that will front the green space, it's walkable and you got your trails and your sidewalks that kind of meander really encourage community and getting to know your neighbors versus a traditional garden apartment. Yeah, it's just, it's a little colder. So this is, and the other big attractive selling part is every unit has a two-car attached garage. So every unit will have, you know, two vehicles at the most. They'll be able to park. In our HOA adventures, we will require parking in the garage as we don't want those to be used for storage. Obviously, if you have one car, you can use the other part for storage, but we don't want parking just all throughout.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I do have a question about the parking behind the buildings. And I guess this would be a question that I'm sure that the fire department had concerns about as if they had to go through there and there was cars parked in and out. I know they're not supposed to be parked there, but somebody has to police that.
Right. And through the review with, I think this is Creve Court Fire District. When we go through that review, if there's no parking, fire lane signs required along there or painting of the curbs. There are forty-three other spaces outside of the garage spaces as well for visitors and such. But you're right. I mean, there would have to be some measure in place that would be dictated by the fire department on whether or not there's signage to keep that from being an issue in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and I've done this design to other places in, one in Richmond Heights and one in Fort Mac. And we do the no parking signs around and honestly, there's very little issue with that because the neighbors don't want to be inconvenienced either as far as, so there's a nice element. But we'll have property management on site, so that's always works out pretty well.
Does everybody have their own individual trash?
Mm-hmm. So it'll be, yeah, it'd be very familiar with, you know, somebody who has a condo and yeah, the roll-off trash bins. And yeah, they'll fit regular garage depth. So it's expected that you should be able to fit your roll-off and your recycle in your garage plus two cars.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one additional question of the petitioner? Could you describe just a little bit more for the, just about the commercial uses that you're proposing at the site?
Yeah, Jacob, I think the commercial uses are consistent with what we proposed over the two other iterations. We're really trying to attract restaurant uses and there is, there has been. We have a fair amount of interest in it, high-quality restaurant users. So we're happy to do one drive-through, which truthfully nowadays, a drive-through, you know, we're not trying to attract the fast food as much as, you know, example, the Chipotis of your world. A lot of times those are pickup windows instead of a drive-through, which is allowed. But then, you know, Panera has gone to true drive-through. So those are really, those are the type of users we're trying to attract. Our, kind of the elevated users. We're not, I think we've called it struck a couple of uses. Like obviously gas stations, we don't want gas stations. We struck that from our potential users and various things that aren't as attractive. These rents will be near the top of this area of the market. So in order to get that, you have to give, you know, no car washes, things like that. So the goal is to, you know, if I was to be able to get like an Andes custard, granted you have custard stand pretty close by nearby, but that kind of, you said, the neighborhood could use as well, walkable. That is, you know, neighborhood quality restaurants is really what we're trying to attract. But it could also end up with one bank use on, you know, a lower impact use. But ideally, try to get two restaurants, coffee, something like that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned there were like forty-five parking spaces, and I guess I'm just trying to figure out where those are.
Sure. So I don't know if it's easy to see. I can only see the red dot whenever I'm on the screen. But along the plan, south edge of the plan, there's parallel parking along that entire drive.
Oh, I see.
And then as you wrap around to the plan north, there's some spaces that are there between the commercial and the residential. And then over by the clubhouse, there's a few more. And then along the radius there next to the Good Shepherd Drive, there's a few more. Sorry.
Yeah, I didn't see. I didn't see the parallel parking. I was thinking that was just a long walk to visitor parking.
What about for the park area, the gated dog area and little courts? Is there parking or walk access in that area?
So there will be a walk. There's a portion of a walk already along Timber Run kind of past part of Good Shepherd or up to Good Shepherd, but we'd be placing a new sidewalk from Olive all the way down to there. I think at one point in the original petition, we had tried to get some parallel parking spaces along Timber Run, but St. Louis County didn't want us to have those there. They wouldn't support that. So we've taken those off. So that's more of just people from this development can walk down there, but also all the people that are on Timber Run can come and visit there through the sidewalk systems that exist.
It's a neighborhood park for, I mean, we've worked with the residents for a number of years on this. This park was kind of the secret sauce that, you know, really got the support of the residents. And we said, hey, we'll keep a green space and we'll make it a passive neighborhood park for all the area to enjoy on our dollar, though. So we're maintaining it. But yeah, the neighbors are welcome to use all the amenities within the Timber Run community.
This, this is Todd. That answers one of my questions about the neighborhood using the park, so thank you. The other question is, I believe you had a good relationship with the neighborhoods around for the first, you know, first two versions. Have you reached out to the neighborhoods to explain to them the latest version on there and get their feedback on that?
So yeah, our typical, you know, typically what we do is I would, you know, we designed it. We had a call with staff to present it. Then talked with Councilmember Dunaway also to make sure she was a support with the change. She was supportive of what we're doing. Then I looped in the HOA president, talked with him via email, and then he looped in his, there's a, the HOA board of three or four people who we work closely with. And they were all supportive. I think I received one email from a resident who had expressed concerns two iterations ago and had been relatively quiet. And she expressed the same concerns to me that really weren't project-specific as much as they were nature and focus on birds, if I remember, and some other items. But all in all, I believe I can say with a high degree of certainty that we still have the neighborhood's support.
Thank you.
I have another question. This is Rovetta. Can you talk about the site lighting?
Sure. The photometric plan hasn't been prepared yet relative to this preliminary development plan, but it certainly will be as we move forward with the more out of the concept, I guess, and the more details. And we'll follow all the county code requirements where we butt residential or commercial to make sure that we're not spilling any light over the property lens.
And the units themselves would have typical house lighting that you would see on the front and rear. Since you have alley load garages here, you would have your typical garage lights that you'd have on the side of your garage. That would be throughout, and then you'd also have your front door lights above the doorbell area.
Would there be some lower lights along those walk?
Yeah, there'd be landscape lighting, decorative landscape light that has a purpose as well.
That answer your question, Rovetta?
It did. And then my other question is related to the access onto the site. I do see a right turn in and out. Yeah, just speak about the access onto the site at the different points.
Sure. So there's a right-in, right-out into, in between the commercial pieces of the development off of Olive. And that's a mode-out restriction. There's an extension of the median to make sure that left turns can't come out that direction. So the main access out, if you're not heading westbound on Olive, would be to Timber Run to take you to the traffic signal that's there at Timber Run and Olive. So you'd have a left turn out of the site to go south. And then you'd have a right turn out if you wanted to head back in to the north towards Timber Run.
Additionally, in our first iteration, we did a traffic study under the guidance of St. Louis County Transportation and did a full And did a full transportation study and it was provided. And obviously that was for, uh, two hundred plus or minus units, uh, so a much more dense, uh, project. So we we didn't update that as we've cut the density significantly.
Is any of the, uh, pavement required to be pervious pavement?
I I don't think by any code standpoint, no. Um, we will be required to provide water quality, volume reduction and stormwater detention, uh, when we go through MSD for permitting. Um, so volume reduction may be, if needed, some porous pavement. Otherwise, it may be bio-retentions, rain gardens, um, other types of, uh, underground storage areas that infiltrate into the soil.
Okay. So the stormwater, um, drainage that you're showing now, you have been in, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm a little hoarse tonight, contact with MSD. I mean, they've been involved already?
We we have. So we we did a conceptual review, I think, uh, several years ago, actually, on this this property prior to bringing in the first iteration of this. And then we've sent this plan to Bob Miller with MSD. He's the the head of this region for the MSD review and he's provided, uh, feedback similar like he has before. Generally, the stormwater management that we've shown on the site hasn't really changed between this iteration and before, uh, but we do know our requirements relative to any water quality and detention.
Okay. I think that's all my questions.
I have a question. Where do you, um, access this green part?
So there's a, there's a proposed sidewalk along Timber Run, um, all the way from Olive, all the way down Timber Run to
People, where would the people park that are going to use this area?
So the, um, originally coupled things. So, you know, it's a regular width street. Um, so if somebody wanted to park on it just as on Timber Run, just as they do today, they they can.
But you're talking about parking in between these units?
No, are you you talking about, are you?
I'm looking at the green portion.
Well, with the parks and all that, how do you get in there? The large park or the courtyards themselves?
The the whole area from the edge of where those units are?
So the courtyard, uh, so the
The dog park, I think.
The dog park. So that, so that area is, you're going to have sidewalks from Olive all the way down. We've actually agreed to, we're gonna, um, the the corner there is a is a bus stop of that Park, it's Parkway School District bus stop. We're actually going to put a bench there and beautify that as part of the park, just to, um, as just a simple goodwill gesture. Uh, but there's the part, if someone wanted to drive their car to it, they would park on the street just as they would today. Proposed parallel parking spots, um, as as we we thought and the neighbors, uh, you know, showed a desire for it and it was, um, you know, negated by, um, St. Louis County Transportation. We were okay with that. And it it also makes it a much more, it kind of makes it a little more passive of a use by doing so. And so were the neighbors were supportive as well. Um, so if somebody wants to park there, they can park on the street, but there's no true, uh, parking spots by honestly choice of county transportation.
So it's not designated, but it is possible.
Yeah, it it is possible. Just as if somebody was having a Super Bowl party, you're gonna see the, or a graduation party, you're gonna see the cars parked on one side of the street. Um, I, obviously it's a passive park, so I don't think we're gonna get that type of traffic, but
Not to interject for the petitioner, but as as a small park, it's really pedestrian oriented.
Right.
For folks to walk.
I I would say almost high percentage are going to be walking. You might have somebody who doesn't get along as around as well, but has a dog and wants to take their dog up there. They're gonna take a drive, but in general, um, you're talking, you know, s- small walk, exactly what Jacob said.
So I just got, uh, it's not a question, it's just a comment. Uh, as I look at, um, the parking for guests to the to the units, um, I feel for those people to have to walk to the units that they're in the center. Say someone is having a a party at their own home, in their home, their guests have to park in those, that lot. That could be a nice little walk. That's all I'm saying. I I live in a condominium complex. I understand this is apartment complex, but yeah, they're gonna have a little distance to walk because my complex has parking lots that are are sometimes a nice walk for for people and they they don't necessarily like that. So, um, just a comment.
Should all of our questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any persons representing a group that would wish to speak in favor of this petition? Okay. Are there any individuals that would wish to speak in favor of this petition? None? Are there any persons representing a group that wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Are there any individuals that like to speak, um, in opposition or or, uh, excuse me, of concern? Anybody want to speak that has concern? Okay. With that, can we have a show of hands of those that are in favor of this petition? Two, three. And those opposed? Two. The record showed there's three in favor and two opposed. This petition is concluded. Thank you. And, uh, I'll just say PC thirty-four dash twenty-four McBride Farreland. The petition has been postponed. We will close the public hearing. Do I? Do I have a a motion to close this meeting?
So moved.
Have a second?
I do.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. This meeting is closed.
Yeah, yeah, we have a very, very short meeting just to do, but if you want to stand out there, I'm happy to chat with you. It'll be just a few minutes. Yep. He's gonna wait and chat with us. Yeah. Thanks. You too.
Thank you.
Jacob, he looks so disappointed that the meeting was over. He was the only one here that looked disappointed.
Okay, all right. Anybody need a break?
No.
Okay. This executive session will begin. Versus a correspondence item regarding
Should I probably call roll again?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We've got a correspondence item regarding PC thirty-three dash ninety-seven AT&amp;T Wireless PCS. Request for amendment to CUP seven-five-one in the NU non-urban district.
Good evening, commissioners. PC thirty-three dash ninety-seven AT&amp;T Wireless PCS. Zones is a conditional use permit in in the non-urban district. Is a request for an amended permitted height on the tract size of zero point two acres located on the south of Interstate forty-four and west of Northern Northern Terminus of Hillview Drive. From the county, from the county context map, the site is located in the South County and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. Tonight is a request for an amendment to the conditional use permit number seven fifty-one to bring an existing one ninety-two foot telecommunication tower into compliance. This conditional use permit allows for a one eighty-to, one eighty-three tower, but due to an oversight, the tower was built at one ninety-two feet tall instead. We permit to recommend an approval because the tower is already existing at one ninety-two feet and amendment brings it into compliance.
You've heard the recommendation of approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I'm, I do have a question. I'm assuming that if the tower fell, it wouldn't hit anything with the additional twelve feet.
Height, that's correct. And how was this found, Mal, real fast? Was this because they're wanting to do some new?
Yeah, when antennas get swapped out or an additional antenna gets added, um.
So what happens to all the years they were not in compliance? They're just forgiven?
You know, it's 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 non-conforming.
If I built my house and did something non-conforming, I think they would tell me to tear that portion off. Oh, well, I'm describing, you know, how I feel about cell towers and law system.
And utilities.
They can build wherever they want, whenever they want and however they want. Pretty much.
We had a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes? Ayes have that. Next we have correspondence item regarding PC thirty-two dash thirty-four DSX Tuning LLC, a request for withdrawal without prejudice.
Yeah. This is PC thirty-two dash twenty-four DSX Tuning LLC. Is there, was a request for a conditional use permit in the M-one industrial district for the purpose of vehicle service center and vehicle repair facility on a two-point-five-mile acre tract located on the west side of Rivers Park Drive, approximately four hundred feet south of Rivers Road. From the coun, from the county context map, the site is located in the South County and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is larger area showing the site. And, um, again, it was a request for a conditional use permit to operate a vehicle service facility and the type of vehicle service that they do on site is manufacturing and installing specialty parts for I N vehicles. Tonight, the petition has requested to withdraw due to termination of the purchase contract for the subject sites. We permit to recommend an approval.
You've heard that recommendation of approval. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second on that?
Second.
Are there any questions?
Question, or Vetta? Yes. So what precipitated this, uh, withdrawal without prejudice?
They indicated that they've just ceased the pursuing the contract with the school, the school district, the property owner. So they just simply aren't moving forward.
Okay.
What does it mean when it says termination of the purchase contact? What is a purchase?
Oh, that should say contract.
They contract.
Contract?
That's a typo.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay, we've had a, any other questions? Had a first and a second. All those, uh, in favor of this recommendation? Signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. And, uh, go to the order?
Nothing from us.
Uh, for October, um, I do believe, I I'm not sure we send an updated schedule, but we will not have an executive meeting on October the seventh because, um, several members of staff will be at the Quad State Planning Conference in Fayetteville, Arkansas. So we are intending to combine the planning, uh, the public hearing and the executive meeting for Monday, the fourteenth in person.
Can we do executive before public? Or is it?
Yeah.
We should be, we should, we can do that, certainly.
Started at six, six thirty, depending on how busy the executive. We will determine what time.
But we should be able to do that.
The hearing and then, yeah.
That's Columbus Day. Does that matter to you guys?
It's no longer a county holiday.
County holiday.
Indigenous, indigenous?
We have not, uh, adopted Indigenous Peoples' Day as as a county yet. But instead of Columbus Day, we, that's how we get the Friday after Thanksgiving off, so.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
No, yeah, it's a good point.
Right. Yeah, I like to move, uh, or German, do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Okay. Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes?
Aye.
Ayes have it and we will see everybody back here October fourteenth.
Thank you.
Maybe at six, six thirty.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Vetta.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you for the option. Appreciate it.